Okay, good evening and welcome to the Palmer Town Council meeting for Monday, September 12th. Would everyone please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is visitors' comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Bonnie?
Good evening, everyone. Bonnie Rathbone, 20 Brown Street, Palmer. I know I have to say that. As all of you know, I emailed Ryan and the council back in August with my concern about some properties in this town and how they haven't been cared for. And thank you to all of you for listening to me and to Ryan as well. Ryan and I have had conversations. You know, I moved to this town in 1974. And that property on Thorndike Street, you know, the one I'm talking about, has been a junkyard since 1974. So that's 48 years ago, and that has really riled me because I love this town and I love the fact that we do offer some wonderful things and opportunities in this town. And I know that that's being taken care of as well. So I decided to speak up, and that's why I sent that email out, because I do a lot of walking around downtown Palmer, because I live in downtown Palmer. And it's just frustrating to see properties that aren't taken care of, and the people who do take care of their property have to look at the properties that aren't taken care of. So one huge property is being taken care of, and I talked to Ryan about that last night at the 9/11 ceremony. So thank you very much. It's nice to see that that is taken care of. And, but I'm just still concerned about some properties. And one of them is that apartment complex that's right across from the senior center. I mean, the weeds and grasses are this tall. It's in the corner of Central Street and Pleasant Street. A gray apartment complex, I mean, there's lots of apartments in there. I'm sure the owner of that apartment building gets boku dollars in rent every single month. And I don't think it would cost $150 for him to take care of that property. But I just feel badly for people who come to the senior center, because they come, because they're offered so many opportunities there. So I am concerned about that. And let's try to make this town attractive, so there's curb appeal for everyone who comes here. And one question I had about, and I know this was discussed at a meeting quite a while ago, the pink house in Three Rivers, I know we were waiting for a court order. Is there any update you can give about that, or no?
Yes. Uh, the, so what we're doing right now is we have a demolition contractor selected. We just went through the, what's called the 21E, which is all the environmental abatement process. And, uh, the, um, so now we're just, uh, moving forward with the demolition contractor. Uh, so our, our goal is in the next two weeks to have all the debris removed.
That's great.
Now, typically what happens in these situations is the cellar hole is filled in and the whole lot is like seeded, you know? But because of, there was a separate fuel oil spill or something in the basement, Mass DEP still has to come out and take a look at that. So it'll, so this will be kind of a more steps to this process than is typical. And it's just because of the, the nature of it being an arson.
Well, that's good news. I mean, I was surprised, I drove by there last week, and the smell of the smoke, you can still smell when you go by that, and it's like, oh my God, I couldn't believe, it's like awful. So that's the only, I just wanted an update. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Anybody else? Say no one? Next item is minutes from July 11th. Did everyone review them? Okay, do a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Minutes of August 8th. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Next is first reading on the Bring Your Own Brew, B-Y-O-V ordinance. Um, Bob, do you just want to read the overview?
Do you have a hard copy, Bob? I don't see it in the email packet. Purpose, the purpose of these regulations is to allow patrons to bring alcoholic beverages into an establishment for their personal consumption in a matter that is compliant with Mass General Law, Chapter 138.
And the second reading and the public hearing will be at our October meeting. Okay. Bob, can I have that back?
Certainly can.
Road repairs without liability, Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 6N. This is an ordinance also, first reading.
Yeah, I don't have any. Ordinance 2023-01, being enacted by the Palmer Town Council, Amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Palmer to adopt a temporary repair to private ways. To move that the council amend the code of the Town of Palmer, Chapter 122 Streets and Sidewalks by adding a new article, six private ways as follows.
Let me read the whole thing, Barb?
No. Second reading and public hearing will also be at our October meeting. Next is new business. Sue Ko, our town clerk, is on her way.
Yes.
While we're waiting for her, we have border health and animal control fee schedule. Is this just, you're just updating us that these fees are going to be changing?
Yes.
And this is up to you to decide anyway, so this is just?
Yep. And we'll publish this online so that everybody can see what the fees are, offenses and stuff like that.
And then we also have, um, a building department fee schedule, and that would be the same thing?
Correct. And I will also post that online so that everybody can see.
Is what is in red on the sheet, is that what's getting changed? Okay.
Was this compared to other communities to do, to see if we're in the ballpark of other communities?
Yep. That's what, that's one of the things that sparked all of this.
Anybody have any questions on the fees?
No.
No. We're not going up exponentially on anything, are we?
No, they all have to be commensurate with what it costs to do that, or else it's not supportable.
We just added things, though, I see. A lot of the stuff in red is new.
Okay, Sue, you want to come up?
The floor is yours. So, um, good evening. Ryan asked me to pop in and, uh, share with you what's been going on in the town clerk's office recently. Last week was our primary election, which went very well. We had, um, 1,160 people voted, and 486 of those were people, the rest were mail-in early voting. And I just wanted to remind everybody that for November's elections, there'll be early voting for two weeks, two weekend days, and you'll also be receiving your cards in the mail again to fill out for, if you want to vote by mail. So if you can just, if you remember sending out the card in August, just please don't send it again, or call, and we'll just check and make sure we have it. So we have, you know, thousands of them to get ready.
What is the deadline to register to vote for folks that haven't yet registered?
So the last date to register to vote would be October 29th, from 9 to 5. It's a Saturday.
Thank you.
So the postcards will be going out. If anybody has any questions on, you know, if they're registered or their party, please call us and we'll, you know, get right back to them. And I just wanted to also, um, two poll workers are going to be retiring at the end of this year. Um, and I just want to take a moment to congratulate them and thank them for their service. They've worked over 50 years.
Wow.
Wow.
So it's Patricia Goddick in Bonsville and Jackie Gravlin in Palmer. So they will be missed, and their knowledge and things of the town you can never replace. So it's hard, you know, we're trying to get new people in to step up for these roles. So it's coming along. People are interested, so that's a good thing.
Oh, good.
So the November election will be their last?
Mm-hmm. And regular day-to-day operations have been, you know, pretty steady and busy. And I'm, I have a new assistant, newer to me, so she's been here since May, and her name is Mary Fickett, and I'm pleased with her, and she's adapted well and understands the ins and outs of the town. So it made this election a little bit more easy. And does anybody else have any questions, or?
So if I heard the numbers right, it was over 50% people mailed in votes? They didn't come out to the polls?
Right.
Yeah, I saw that. The math, 674 mail-ins versus the 400 and change in person. That's, did you, and you may not know, just town-wise comparable, were most towns like heavy mail-in versus in-person? Were they really?
Yep. And it's expensive to budget in for this now, because it was almost $900 in postage that, because the vote, vote act didn't pass till later.
Right.
So it's mandatory now for, you know, all elections, even municipal.
And we also have that Dropbox, the black box that's near the other Dropboxes in the back half of the building.
So the state paid for the voter to get the, the white envelope back with the state's postage, but to mail it out was on our dime.
Hmm.
And the post office, you know, we worked together on Election Day. I, you know, went to the post office and made sure there was none there. We stayed out looking up by 8 o'clock to see if anybody pulled in, and just to bring them, but people were really, if you do it a few times, then they get the hang of it, and...
How many registered voters are in town?
Uh, 9,152.
And then of the ones that voted, um, so 400 voted on that day, 400 and something?
A little over 400, yep.
And then some of them were the mail-in, but some, did people also, did a lot of people pay?
Early voting, it was, it's not as high as before ever. I think altogether, we probably had about 70. And we had to, we did it for eight days.
Right.
So on that Saturday, we were here 9 to 5, and I think three people voted.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So in the news, and, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing it a lot more in the news, that normally being an election volunteer is, it's an incredibly important job, but in past, it's always been kind of an under-the-radar, kind of a sleepy position in terms of, like, it doesn't get a lot of notoriety and attention to be a poll worker. But lately, probably because of the 2020 election, there's a lot of emphasis on poll workers in some communities and in some states, and it's becoming kind of a high-pressure position. Thankfully, we're not really seeing that here, it being high-pressure for folks, or folks sort of being like accosted or, or anything like that. But still, you know, it's, it's, this is an incredibly vital and important role in our community, and the fact that these two folks have done it for over 50 years is definitely something to be said, and yeah, we're, we're going to have to find a way to really acknowledge these folks.
Without doubt.
And I think, I just want to say thank you, Sue, for everything that you do. I know that the job of the town clerk has become extremely stressful during the election time, so I just thank you for being able to give every voter in Palmer the confidence that we, you know, can trust that our ballots are safe with you and your team.
Thank you.
Anything else for Sue? Hey, Phil. Okay, thanks, Sue.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is resolution, hold on. This packet's out of order?
Yeah, this is out of order.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it, too.
Yeah, I think, because I was doing the revolving funds and the fee schedule together.
Okay, so we have Resolution 2023-2, to approve a transfer from capital stabilizate, capital stabilization for removal and restoration of two concrete doorway roofs at Converse Middle School. To transfer $54,890.32 from Capital Stabilization Fund for removal and restoration of two concrete doorway roofs at Converse Middle School. Ryan?
Yes, so right around the time of Memorial Day, we noticed that the decorative sandstone reliefs outside the two side doors at Converse Middle School were deteriorating and starting to drop components. And, you know, with Memorial Day coming up, the fact that folks would be crowding around the, the middle school, the fact that I've seen, um, folks skateboarding in the area, generally walking in the area, this was a real hazard that we had to address. So we did, we got a company out there, they've done a beautiful job. If you go by Converse today, you would never even know that those things were there, removed. It, it looks very seamless now, and, um, and nobody was hurt.
Going out on a limb, there's no way we can recoup any of that through insurance or anything. It's just wear and tear. Yeah, it does look good. I went by there, and you're right, it just, if you didn't know what was there, you'd never know.
Right.
It looks good.
Right.
Questions, anyone?
So you've already repaired this? Is that what's?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we had to take care of it.
There's a liability.
Because all I'm seeing here is something about masonry.
It's further down in the packet?
Yeah, sorry, I just...
It's before that one?
But, um, so the work's already been done?
Yes.
Obviously, you have to pay for it. Okay, I guess my, I was just curious why the work had, had to, was being done. I thought it was something that was coming up to be done, and why it had to be done, blah, blah, blah.
It was already falling apart.
And, um, okay.
Anybody else? So Ryan, I, you know, I don't, I understand having to fix something that's a hazard, but this repair went beyond, I think, fixing the hazard. Um, the work wasn't done till July, so this all wasn't related directly to Memorial Day? If, I mean, all this stuff is dated July 11th and beyond, and, um, you know, you didn't have the money to do it, and, you know, and I don't think you should have. I, I think that, um, you know, it's up to the council to decide whether or not to appropriate the funds. Again, the issue of, you know, having to fix the emergency issue, I understand, an emergency repair, but $55,000 is well beyond, in my opinion, an emergency repair. So, um, but, I mean, I, I, it was done at this point, but I don't think it should have been done. I, I don't think you had the authority to do it, honestly. You didn't have an appropriation to, to cover the cost. And what was the, what was, if, if it was falling apart in, in, in May around Memorial Day, what was the cost? I'm assuming that cost was absorbed somewhere in the budget.
What cost?
Well, you just said that there was a safety issue around Memorial Day for it to be repaired, and so that would have been May, and this was done in July.
Yeah, I mean, I, we noticed the issue, I noticed the issue around Memorial Day. Um, we had to, you know, get workers. Uh, I, I don't have, I mean, what, why it took till July? Uh, I'm trying to remember, was there, why did it take till July?
Because they couldn't get out there and do it until that time.
Yeah. Um, so, again, it, it was a hazard to the public. I was more concerned about somebody getting hurt, and I didn't know how much this was going to cost when we started doing it, but masonry work is expensive. I mean, the quote that we've gotten for masonry work around Town Hall is over $80,000.
We, we still using the building at all? I mean, to me, it, I'm just first learning of this now, after it's already been done and paid for, where, you know, we've been brought to our attention or whatever, and gone out and gotten a price on, and meanwhile, had the place ribboned off or quarantined off, and we're dumping money into something that we don't utilize. Um, I don't know, just, like I said, I, I originally just thought it was something that was coming up, and my, my question was going to be, well, why are we putting money into something that's, we, we don't use, utilize? Are we not just better off, you know, ribbon off the area that, you know, you, you don't need to be trespassing there, and... I think your point is we could have voted on it in June. It, it just, to me, I, I just, just learning, learning about it, and you're asking that you want money for something that I didn't even know nothing about. I mean, obviously, we've got to pay our bill, and I commend you for going out there, I guess, and taking care of something that you thought was an emergency, not to, you know, not trying to pick on you for that, and just not knowing anything about it till now, of, look, hey, by the way, uh, you know, I need money to pay for this, and... Two concrete doorway, doorway roofs. Okay, so you would have definitely quarantined areas, so somebody walked, you're saying like when you first walk right into the building there, from the roadside?
It was over the, it was the doorway, like, senior park, closest to the front door, right?
And, I know everything's expensive, and I guess to, to simmer me down, it, it, that is something to the aesthetic of the place, and, you know, instead of letting it collapse and fall and look like crap, I would say, I, I'm sure I would have said, yeah, let's fix this thing, but just learning about it now is kind of weird.
Here we need a motion. Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appropriate the funds for the repairs at Converse Middle School.
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm staying. Resolution 2023-3, to approve a transfer from the stabilization fund to pay for prior fiscal year obligations, to transfer $1,550.46 from the stabilization fund to highway general expenses to pay for an outstanding prior year invoice. Any questions on this one?
Can we go back to the Congress one real quick, or is it done?
Um, let's just finish this, and then you can ask, okay? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
It's not going to affect anything.
No. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
First by Jessica, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Go ahead.
So just for future reference, what should the guidance be? A limit before it should be spent, or?
The law indicates that if it's an emergency, emergency repairs can be fixed. There's steps involved to document why a repair was considered an emergency. You do as much of, you know, you take care of the emergency, and then beyond that, you have to procure, you know, so this was over $50,000, so things should have been procured.
Something like that, because it's an emergency, does, doesn't have to go out to bid?
Only to fix the emergency, but not the entire thing, so, and there, there's different steps, and I'm not a procurement officer, but there's steps that have to happen. I think you have to advertise in the central register, there's different things that have to happen. Um, but in my, like I said, in my opinion, we didn't have an appropriation, and whether it was an emergency meeting or whatever, it should have been, we should have appropriated the funds prior to the work being done. So I, I don't think it's about a limit, it's just about following the procedure, in my Next is Resolution 2020-20, adoption of a fiscal '23 capital plan. DPW was unable to purchase and, and order a Mack truck due to continued supply chain issues. They're looking to amend Resolution 2022-20 to read Western Star truck instead of Mack truck due to supply chain issues. A motion to make that correction?
Discussion.
Yep, first, well, motion, second, discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Are we settling for something less than adequate?
Nope.
No, Western Star's a good truck. I defer to Phil on that. No, it's just...
They all own each other nowadays, so...
Right, due to supply chain issues?
They all own each other nowadays, quite frankly, I think they all junk. I would go buy me a 1980-something and keep it, keep it up to shape, and where you're not, get all the emissions, and, but that's it. Anyways, but yeah, that's one of my favorite trucks.
If there are supply issues, I mean, are we settling something, for something less because we want it now versus waiting for the supply issue to catch up? That's all I'm...
We're still going to have to wait two years for this, right? Two years for this truck anyways?
Really?
Yeah.
It's nuts.
So...
I mean, I'd have to go back and check. I don't even think you could put in orders for Mack trucks anymore. I don't think they're even accepting new orders.
No, I just...
So...
So everybody's aware, as I just didn't know we were settling, that's all. Like, I didn't know if it was just something that we were forced to do, or if it was just something that we wanted to do, that's all.
Forced, but it's not settling.
Got it. Understood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
That was the only amount that was coming out, or did? Looking at the May...
Well, we're not changing the amount, we're just changing...
Correct.
The brand.
The wording, and it was Mack truck.
Mm-hmm.
In May, we had all that stuff that was in free cash, 855,000.
I was going to bring that up.
Yeah, the vehicles were in a meeting ahead of that. So, yeah, we're bringing you back the building stuff as we get more accurate quotes.
We didn't move that, we took all that money and put it aside, right?
Correct.
We didn't appropriate it.
As far as I'm aware, I was going to bring it up, because I don't remember talking about spending that money yet, so, I know we moved that money, but yet you were going to give us more information on those projects, and then...
We did in May.
We were going to spell.
The vote is here in...
This isn't the whole 855.
No.
This is just the Mack truck piece.
No, they're at the police station.
Yep. Soon as you walk in the door, you'll see them on the left.
Not a different amount.
Right. I was actually going to bring it up in earl business, too, just to say, hey, we haven't heard anything, I was just curious, because it sounded like at the time when you brought it up, that it was, that you wanted to move along on those projects.
We do, we do. Part of it is getting the actual people to come and take a look at our work. It's just like, we're running into issues where, like everybody else, people are busy.
Yep, I understand. It was just, there was a lot of urgency at the time, and then, like Mark said, hey, I haven't heard anything on this, and I was going to bring it up tonight, too, so...
Oh, the urgency's still there, just capacity is not marrying up to urgency.
Gotcha.
Next is revolving fund, charge point, vehicle charging fees.
So we've had these vehicle chargers at the library and here at Town Hall. We got them with a grant. They were covered for five years. That five years is now up, so we own them, and we own all the maintenance going forward, and, um, you know, so that we, we want to charge... you know, so that we, we wanna charge a fee for their usage and put that fee into a revolving fund, so it goes towards maintaining and eventually, uh, adding more charging stations. At the, uh, this current fee, the average electric vehicle, it would cost them eight dollars to fill up their tank. So.
Out of curiosity, do other municipalities or on us charge for their municipal chargers?
Yes.
I know.
I know half an electric car. I mean, I know. Counselor Jessica does.
And, and that was my question, cause I think, um, other municipalities are a little bit less expensive per kilowatt hour, but I don't know if you are gauging, because I know ChargePoint offers that, um, service where they basically tell you like how much you have to charge in order to break even. So I was just wondering where you got the thirty-three cents per kilowatt?
We did a survey.
We did with National Grid what we get charged.
Okay.
Compared to the usage.
Yeah, whatever your bill is, double, double it.
Thirty-three cents a kilowatt.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not looking to.
I mean, it's.
No, I know.
Pretty cost neutral, right? What our costs are is basically the only the fee that we're charging.
Gas.
Why? Yeah, I mean, it's gas and oil that's making that electricity.
Yeah, private companies own gas and.
Well, so what?
Yeah, well, it's, it's probably better to raise the temperature around the frog than just dump the frog in hot water, you know?
Well, that's what's going on in the world right now is you, they're, they're forcing this stuff down people's throats.
What's next?
So.
Thirty-three, you're good with the thirty-three?
Yeah, we're good with the thirty-three.
So I, my, I guess my only question was, do we need to vote to actually amend our current revolving fund? Because we have a, we have an ordinance, right, already?
Uh, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't a hundred percent sure on that. Everything that we read said that we should do it this way, so just out of.
Yeah, I don't know though if we, if we need to amend the current ordinance to add these to it. Because we already, like, we're not creating a new ordinance. We already have a revolving fund ordinance. So I just wanna make sure we do it right so that we don't have an issue.
Yeah.
They're not separate funds then, right?
Well, we could, you could do it as an amendment.
Do that with the amendment.
So just do it as an amendment.
Uh, well, I think you'd wanna say to amend, like you need to know what the, what the current ordinance is.
This is the current ordinance? This is from the last one that, um, did in two thousand and eighteen.
No, so there is an existing, there's an existing ordinance that has a number. Like there's, you know what I mean? And so we would want to amend ordinance, whatever, to add. So I don't know if we maybe just wanna.
We just did that, didn't we? Just approved it at the end of last.
No, so that was just the spending thresholds.
Got it.
But there needs to be an actual ordinance for revolving accounts now. So I don't know if we just wanna, like, get everything together and just do it at the October meeting, just to do it right?
Yeah, I mean.
Cause this is kinda creating a new one, which we shouldn't be doing.
Right, but I'm saying that you, you could just decide right now to amend the existing ordinance and then we will go back and plug in the ordinance number and all that later on.
Okay, I see. And then what's the, um?
The street permits?
Yeah.
So the street permits, this is, it, it, this is achieving two things. The street permits were in the town manager's office previously, which neither Sarah or I are really, um, the people that should be making those decisions. It should be coming from the Public Works people. And then, um, you know, they, they have, um, you know, they would like to have a revolving fund with that fee revenue so that they can, you know, again, do the, they can put it towards those activities. So expenses for training, trench safety, personnel overtime that are related to those particular projects.
What's the, um, so what are we estimating the fees that we're gonna charge will be?
For the permit fees for their street excavation, currently I believe it's a hundred dollars?
Yes.
For street excavation? And originally it would just go into the town manager. One, a trenching, I know Matt Morris was working on that of the fee for how much the trenching is. And the street entrance is the same as excavation, a hundred dollars. And stormwater, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Stormwater will eventually be a fifteen dollar, um, well, yeah, it'll, it'll start as a fifteen dollar, um, per a, um, there's a measurement that I don't remember off the top of my head, cubic yard or something like that.
So I would think if we, if we end up doing storm, you're talking about that like stormwater assessment?
Right, correct.
So I, if, if we go that route, which I think that's a counselor, counselor decision.
That's not even on here. I don't know why we're talking about stormwater.
Well, cause this isn't stormwater. So I don't think that that would, I don't think that this should be under, stormwater should be under street, uh, permits. I would like more information because personally, if we're talking a hundred bucks here, a hundred bucks there, I don't know why it has to be in a revolving account, why it just can't, you know, if we need to put, if we need to budget for training, trench safety, training for our DPW employees, then we should just be doing that. And we shouldn't be waiting until we build up a dollar amount in a fee schedule in a revolving account to be able to do that. So personally, uh, you know, I would want more information about what, what we're looking to generate by this street permit, um, these fees and charges. And like I said, preferably, unless I would get other information to change my mind, I would think that this would just be general fund revenue. And if the DPW director is concerned with trench safety, um, training for his personnel, then I would support just funding money to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
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 Okay, we'll go back with more info.
Okay, so, um, I, I mean, personally, I'm okay with amending, taking a vote to amend for the EV charging stations, but I'd like to just take the other one off. So do you wanna do that or do you wanna just wait till the next?
No, 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 let's do that. Do the charging stations and I'll have Matt come back with more info on the street permits.
Right.
Okay, and, and definitely removing stormwater.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't, I didn't even notice that was in there, honestly.
Okay, so, um, well, this would, it's an ordinance, so it would have, it's an amendment to an ordinance, so we would have to go through the whole. Do we have to go through the whole first reading, second reading, public hearing? I have no idea.
Uh-uh. No, for a new ordinance, yes.
Uh, it's an ordinance. It's an amendment to an ordinance.
I think if we amend it, we still have to go through all the.
Let, let's just do, can you just get more information for the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, I tend to agree.
Cause if it's a first reading, the agenda doesn't say that either. Okay.
Uh, well, it wouldn't be. It would be, if it, if it's going through the ordinance process, then this is the introduction and October would become the first reading.
Okay, that's fine, but so we can still do that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that's H and J, uh, H and I rolled into one. Then we have, so the municipal lien certificate fee is not, was not listed as an agenda item.
I had put it under the town manager fees, fee schedule.
Well, the, the other ones were listed though, um.
Uh, right here, collector's office municipal lien certificate.
Okay, so it's under town manager and building department fee schedule?
Correct.
Okay, so there's a request from Carolyn Baldiga regarding increasing the uh, municipal lien certificate fee from twenty-five to fifty dollars effective November first.
What? I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing tonight for some weird reason.
There's a request from Carolyn Baldiga, who's the, um, the town collector to increase the municipal lien certificate fee from twenty-five dollars to fifty. And the municipal lien is a legal document that's requested of the collector that basically gives a snapshot of what's owed for real estate, uh, sewer charges as of a certain date and then it's filed at the Registry of Deeds. Um, it's a, it's just, it's a legal document. A lot of communities charge fifty dollars now for that fee. Any questions?
No.
Motion to increase to fifty?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Any other new business?
Oh, I do.
Yep.
Um, and I got the, Paul's little intersection taken care of, looks nice. High Street though, on the way leaving here, we have the crosswalk there. And there is no signs indicating that there's a crosswalk, you know, as you're going towards the, the junction there. Through, through the S-curves there, there's, there is a crosswalk there, but there's no signage of a crosswalk being there. And being the crazy intersection, oh, it's nothing wrong with the intersection. It's the people that drive, quite frankly, but. Um, yeah, they just drive way too fast and they're always on your phones and whatever.
Like the traffic on High Street.
Right.
They go way too fast, yeah.
Just in general. Anyways, there, there's no signage there letting them know that there's a crosswalk there. So maybe, you know, look into it, whatever, see if a sign.
Can I meet you down there?
Put up there and maybe.
Confirm that.
Some of the solution too is to, you know, I know you got the, the, the speed limit sign on one side. Maybe another one on the other side and I don't know if they can kick, kick it down through them S-curves being that there's a crosswalk ahead to like twenty-five or something, you know? Hey, crosswalk ahead, slow down, dah dah dah. It's, it's, it, it's just a bad place, quite frankly, and you know, people just cruise and.
Mm-hmm, I completely agree.
I did notice the other day when I was going through on the bike, I said, anyways, I thought there used to be one there, but.
All right, so later this week.
I guess the question I was gonna ask is, are, are you getting rid of that crosswalk there? And that's why the, the sign's not there no more, you know, there, cause I, I know we had got rid of some crosswalks at one point. But I mean, if it's gonna be there.
Yeah, we'll make a sign.
It should be some type of signage there and maybe, like I said, slow them down to, you know, through, through that area, twenty-five or something to, I mean, I don't know what you have to do to do that. It, it's not a state road, so I know you don't have to ask the old man permission. It's your road, you know?
Which road are you talking about right now?
That's what I'm saying. I wanna meet you down there.
Where, what crosswalk?
Right by, uh.
Commercial Street.
Commercial Street, right before you get to Commercial Street, where the bush is, the, the famous bush that's.
Yeah, so diagonally this way.
Blocks my.
Right. It goes right, and almost like intersection to Harvey Street. Harvey Street's a dead end.
Yeah, I'll, I'll meet you down there.
Yeah. Um, oh, we can start down at St. Joe's now, um.
Gotta get the full view.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's.
Gotta get the approach.
Should at least be a sign there and maybe, like I said, cause it is an S-term.
Happy to put a sign there. I just wanna make sure that we're talking about the same spot.
And while you're there, like hack that bush.
If you were at the top of Commercial Street.
Yes.
And did a three sixty to come back this way because you goofed up.
Yes.
There's, right there, there's a crosswalk.
And then some bushes you like and some bushes you don't like.
Well, the bush that, that they're talking about right now is the same bush that we talked about.
This is the homeowner one, right?
It was like a year ago, if not longer.
Yeah.
So where did, I mean, where does that stand?
Well, that, that.
Well.
For me, that's like a no-win situation, cause the, the homeowner is a little bit of, uh, why are you guys talking to me? Get off of my property and, uh.
Okay, but if there's a safety, if there's a safety issue for line of sight, then it's a different issue than just.
Cosmetic.
Right.
Right.
Unlike the other one, that wasn't, but, um.
It was addressed.
Right, even though it wasn't in a line of sight.
But you, you have a connection with this guy.
Oh, I do.
So, I mean, you were gonna kinda help me out, try to like have a more friendly conversation, right?
I, I quite frankly think, you know, your, your stop line is too far back, number one. It, it should be further up.
But if you're further up, you're gonna be driving into traffic.
You, you, you're still not gonna be into traffic. You would not, you would be passed there and you can look around it. Eh, I could go talk to Dave and see if we can get it. And, and part of his reasoning, part of his reasoning is the traffic lights coming into the house, I guess, is um, you know, blocks all, he's just constantly, but that's.
Okay, so it needs to be addressed and.
Talking about the other crosswalk there.
This one right here, the, the little one there, yeah.
So the one, the other way.
I, I don't know if there's even a sign for the other, other, other one.
The other one is probably a discontinued crosswalk, cause it doesn't look like it goes to anything.
Terminates anywhere, right?
Yeah.
Right, so it's probably an illegal.
They both go to sidewalks.
It doesn't look like there's a sidewalk on the right.
Yeah, the other one.
There is, it's just, has never been the bushes trimmed from the sidewalk.
Okay, well, anyway, you guys can look into that.
We will. I'll meet you down there. We'll talk to the homeowner. We'll put a sign at the right crosswalk. World will be happy.
Okay, any other new business?
I tell you what, we'll buy Dave a new bush, we'll move it back for.
Yes, subcommittee reports? I know I didn't assign subcommittees, I'm sorry.
Um, don't worry about it.
The, the goal sub, the town manager goal subcommittee is gonna be Jessica, Mark and myself, so.
Who's this barb? I'm sorry.
Goals.
Goals. Let's still have water in my ears.
I think I'm talking out loud, but.
No, I can hear myself talking. It's, it's gotta be.
Soft ears. Uh, okay, so, uh,
Q-tip.
We should schedule something for the upcoming week if we can. And then I'll send the rest of them out to everybody, cause that was the one that's the most time sensitive. Everything else is not as important.
So that was you?
Jessica.
And Mark.
And Mark.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, town manager report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so, uh, we talked about at a previous council meeting about doing a townwide tree hazard survey. So I sat down with the town's tree warden, Rudy Merrick. Uh, we discussed how we could, uh, undertake this. Um, he came up with a plan of that he would start to go through neighborhoods. Uh, each neighborhood that he goes through, he would make a spreadsheet with all of the hazards.
Sorry.
And, um, share that with me and each week I would contract out to get those hazards taken care of. So that's been ongoing. Um, we've already, uh, taken care of a number of, of hazards, um. He, uh, did get, um, uh, slowed down a little bit because he, this is a part-time job for him, his full-time day job. He works for a forester. And, uh, most of the foresters in the Commonwealth got pulled into work on the green, uh, Orange Line project in Boston. Uh, so he's finishing that up and he will get back to, uh, doing the townwide tree hazard survey. Uh, but it, but it's going very well. We're identifying things and getting them taken care of. Uh, Converse.
While you were on that.
Yep.
Maybe he could see if there's any, um, any colleges that have programs where we could get some college kids to be able to assist him with identifying the hazard trees.
Talk to him about that.
Okay.
That or even maybe Pathfinder. I know they have a.
Uh, Converse, uh, middle school, uh, we talked about at, uh, previous town forums and stuff to investigate it for town use. Uh, I've talked to a couple of, uh, colleague town managers that had similar school, uh, projects in their communities. Uh, and they, um, recommended, uh, getting a commercial architect to go through the building and just give you a general code review. So that's, that's what I plan to do. I'm, I have a conversation, uh, later this week with some commercial architects, uh, to come up with a scope of work and put out a, um, request for qualifications.
Question on that, so the, the previous reports that were done for the, when we, when we put housing out to bid or requests for housing, did those reports identify, um, code issues in the building?
Uh, some, yeah, let me go back and look at those. Those are.
I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna pay. Yeah, I don't wanna pay again for something that we might have, um.
Yeah, the only, the only issue, uh, with that is it might not be fully informative because different uses trigger different code requirements. So housing might have the most onerous code requirements. A school might have like the second or the most onerous. And then just a regular office building might have lesser code requirements. So we might not get the information about if it was a lesser use.
So I, I feel like we haven't, um, necessarily keyed into what the uses for that building, so.
I thought you were doing a feasibility study on.
Right, so according to Facebook, according to Facebook, it's just office space. And that I don't think was the discussion that the council had. It wasn't the discussion that I participated in, that it was just office space. So I think that, you know, the way I remember the last conversation was reaching out to different stakeholders regard, so reaching out to the school department to see if they need space for office space, but reaching out to the senior center. Looking. looking at, looking at it being a senior, uh, a senior center slash community center, because that was the big thing that people said when we had all those, um, reuse meetings for the building, is that they wanted it to be used for community use. And so I think that we really have to have that kind of outline, just to your point of different code requirements are gonna kick in depending on the actual use of the building. And so I think that until we have that discussion, it doesn't make sense to bring on an architect potentially, or whoever the person is that you would be bringing on, because, um, it's beyond office. It, we wanna use it for beyond office space, I guess is the.
Right.
I, I guess my question is, um, from what I just heard quickly, housing, we'll say, is the most erroneous in, uh, stringent house codes, correct?
Can be, yeah.
So why would not our building department be able to tell you what codes need, what needs to be done to be brought up to code without going out somewhere else?
No, not necessarily.
And.
They're, they might be able to tell you what codes, but they're not architects. They can't sort of walk you through what's, what, what's, what's going to happen.
Okay, I'm missing, I'm missing something here. I'm figuring they know codes and they're the ones giving out permits for building codes.
It doesn't work, yeah, it's not, that's not.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna have to enlighten me, cuz I would think that your building department would be able to do that. I guess, you're saying because things are gonna.
They're not architects.
Okay, but why are we needing an architect? Do you already have something, an architect is somebody that designs something being changed?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just sort of explaining how some other communities went through this to get informed with the information that we're looking for.
Right, but I, I, I don't, I'm just trying to understand, if you want, asking for an architect, that means you, you've already have some type of design changes for a certain thing, or, I, I don't know.
Or you want them to provide the design change?
Right.
I had a question, Ryan.
So, is that going on, or, I, I mean, I don't know, I just.
Sorry, go.
No, he's asking, he just asked you a question.
What was the question?
I'm saying, well, is that what's going on for the need of bringing in an architect, that you already have some type of?
Yes, we already have some type of questions that we're asking. As Barbara said, a senior center, school administrative offices, community center. Those are, those are what I'm gonna ask this architect to provide me. If it's this use, what would be triggered? What would be caught? What would the costs be?
That's what's getting me, I guess, I'm just trying to, is that your building department can't tell you that, depending on what use? What codes need to?
No.
I, I don't know, I'm not, I, we'll have to talk, cuz I'm totally not getting it. It's like, why do you gotta building department?
Well, then I, I mean, we could make some time.
You know, if the building department knows what the codes is for a house, they must know what the codes is for a restaurant or, uh, a hospital. I mean, I don't know, I.
Yeah.
Correct me, I.
Bob?
I just kinda wanted to flip it quickly is, are there, to your knowledge, cuz I'm ignorant in this situation, is are there more or lesser restrictive codes if we keep it, like all the uses you just mentioned are all if the town retains ownership? Does that get more aggressive if it becomes a private sale? And then, in other words, is there lesser of a code responsibility because the town will retain ownership versus if it was sold outright to a private party?
No, I, I believe any user would be subject to the same code requirements.
Okay.
Thanks. Uh, again, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I, uh, lost track of what I was doing here. Um, so anyways, you guys have asked me to get you some information regarding different uses of Converse. This is the way that I believe I can get you that information, so stay tuned. Uh, let me see, where was I? Uh, some code enforcement things, as, as Bonnie Rathbone had indicated earlier, uh, we definitely are trying to be very aggressive in cleaning up some of the blighted properties in town. Um, again, I appreciate everybody's patience. Uh, these are a process, each and every one of them. Uh, so one thirty-four Gate Street, uh, was a previous complaint about some storage trailers. I mean, these are, uh, these were eighteen-wheeler, um, trailers that had been on this property for twenty, thirty years. Uh, they've all been removed. So again, uh, working with the homeowner, uh, the property owner, we were able to get this cleaned up. Uh, there's still some minor site work to be cleaned up. Uh, the homeowner is doing that and we are, um, you know, working with them to make sure that it happens. Uh, the pink house, I was asked earlier, you know, how close are we to finally cleaning up that pink house? And I feel we're about two weeks or so away. You know, I'm gonna do my best to get it, get it done in that two weeks. Um, that's really all I have on that. It's, it's, uh, I think we're there. Let's just see if we can cross the finish line.
Ryan, before you move on, I see Church Street Bridge and then there are two repairs to two different bridges?
Yes.
Who paid for those repairs? I didn't see anything.
Uh. Let me get back to you on that. I just wanna, I think Mast Dot did, but I wanna confirm.
Okay.
Cuz that's who sent me the information about these two bridges, so.
Sure.
Let me get back to you on that. One more thing. Nope, that was all I had.
So let's talk about, because this is the first I'm seeing about this, so, I mean, obviously we've had discussions about getting the DPW facility moved to a different location, but now you're saying there's, um, some roof leaks and you're looking at temporary office trailers?
Yes.
So what's going on?
Johnny Lysak's still got all the trailers from the old school.
Yeah.
Probably get a deal on them now.
Um, I mean, I, you know, I wanna be very careful about what I say. I, I think the smartest thing would be to actually invite, uh, counselors when their schedule permits to come and walk down, see the property themselves and, and see the conditions of the DPW yard. It, it, it's a lot of deferred stuff. It would be hard to explain it all in one meeting.
We've had, we've known that the DPW has needed to move from that location for years. We just, we also know that the senior center needs to be.